We'd like to call the meeting back to order. Thank you. Actions taken in closed session. Trustee Prendergast.
There were no actions. Reportable actions.
We will now have the invocation led by trustee Jamal and the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Milchiker.
Okay, so we all know next week is Thanksgiving. And as I said at the last board meeting, I'm very grateful to live in the United States, thankful to be in this country, and thankful to have the freedoms that we enjoy. And I think when you think of Thanksgiving, I think of unity, morale, gratitude. In modern times, that's how we think about it. I also think we consider other aspects of Thanksgiving like feasts and family get-togethers and football. So I grew up in Detroit and had a lot of very difficult Thanksgivings, watching my beloved Lions snatch defeat from what we thought were absolute victories. Thankfully, those times have changed, except last night wasn't so great. But overall, the times have changed. But I spent many Thanksgivings sulking about the result of that game. But look, I think all of us here, at least at the dais, are thankful for all of you. And we have this incredible community college district. It can't be said enough times how great our two colleges are. And that's because of the faculty, the staff, the administrators. And of course, our students. I look down at our student trustee. So if I could raise a glass, I would. So thank you all.
Please join me and join our board in saying the pledge of allegiance to our joint nation. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united in God, liberty, and justice for all.
Next, we have public comments. The first is Ivan Magarejo. It's hard to read this. Alkahal. London Garraway. Katie Doyle. And Kia. Thank you. Would you say your name as you start, in case everybody knows for sure?
Good afternoon, board and everyone here present today. I'm Ivan Magarejo. I'm a student currently here at Saddleback College. I'm also a veteran who served six and a half years in the military. And I didn't decide to come back to school seriously until 2021, 2022, recently. And I just want to bring a program to help me out during my time learning back into school and struggling, because according to our transcripts we use now to put us in certain classes, I was put in classes that I had not such subjects for over about 10 years, give or take. So even though I knew the knowledge of some of those classes, it was the embedded tutors that actually helped me, through my time in those classes, get reacclimated to, one, it's a new environment for us as military personnel coming out, is all the technology that we use now compared to what we used to do before. Everything was pen and paper back in my day. Now it's computers and slideshows. But it was our embedded tutors who helped me get to where I am now, doing a lot better in classes, successful. They built communities around us in the classrooms, being able to touch subjects that sometimes, because of college pace, is a little bit quicker than us being able to stop the professors to explain certain little things. But them being embedded, sorry, made it a lot more easier for us to access them and catch up to the material that we were a little bit behind. And now we fully understand, because college is not about just passing, but it's about learning and being able to apply these subjects to other things. Real quick, as I see the time, I also worked at O'Toole High School as an instructional aide for the special ed program and English learners. And just seeing the community of the kids that are coming up, I see the impact that structural aides, which are essentially embedded tutors, for their version of the high school, help them out. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Landon Garraway. I am a Marine Corps veteran. And this past year, it was my first year or first semester here at Saddleback. And throughout then to now, I have spent a lot of time with my embedded tutors. Over the course of the summer, I spent 30 hours with my embedded tutor outside in the LRC.
And
We'd like to call the meeting back to order. Thank you. Actions taken in closed session. Trustee Prendergast.
There were no actions.
Okay.
Reportable actions.
We will now have the invocation led by trustee Jamal and the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Milchiker.
Okay, so we all know next week is Thanksgiving. And as I said at the last board meeting, I'm very grateful to live in the United States, thankful to be in this country, and thankful to have the freedoms that we enjoy. And I think when you think of Thanksgiving, I think of unity, morale, gratitude. In modern times, that's how we think about it. I also think we consider other aspects of Thanksgiving like feasts, and family get-togethers, and football. So I grew up in Detroit and had a lot of very difficult Thanksgivings, watching my beloved Lions snatch defeat from what we thought were absolute victories. And thankfully, those times have changed, except last night wasn't so great. But overall, the times have changed. But I spent many Thanksgivings sulking about the result of that game. But look, I think all of us here, at least at the dais, are thankful for all of you. And, you know, we have this incredible community college district. It can't be said enough times how great our two colleges are. And that's because of the faculty, the staff, the administrators, and of course, our students. I look down at our student trustee. So if I could raise a glass, I would. So thank you all.
Please join me and join our board in saying the pledge of allegiance to our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, yeah.
Next, we have public comments. The first is Ivan Mulagio, Wassim, it's hard to read this, Al Kahal, London Garaway, Katie Doyle, and Kia. Thank you. Would you say your name as you start, in case, you know, just so everybody knows for sure?
Good afternoon, Board and everyone here present today. I'm Ivan Mulagio. I'm a student currently here at Saddleback College. I'm also a veteran who served six and a half years in the military. And I didn't decide to come back to school seriously until 2021, 2022, recently. And I just want to bring a program to help me out during my time learning back into school and struggling, because according to our transcripts we use now to put us in certain classes, I was put in classes that I had not such those subjects for over about 10 years, give or take. So even though I was, I knew the knowledge of some of those classes, it was the embedded tutors that actually helped me through my time in those classes get re-acclimated to, one, it's a new environment for us as military personnel coming out, is all the technology that we use now compared to what we used to do before. Everything was pen and paper back in my day. Now it's computers and slideshows. But it was our embedded tutors who helped me get to where I am now, doing a lot better in classes, successful. They committed, built communities around us in the classrooms, being able to touch subjects that sometimes, because of college pace, is a little bit quicker than us being able to stop the professors to explain certain little things. But they're, them being embedded, sorry, made it a lot more easier for us to access them and catch up to the material that we were a little bit behind, and now we fully understand. Because college is not about just passing, but it's about learning and be able to apply these subjects to other things. Real quick, as I see the time, I also worked at O'Toole High School as an instructional aide for the special ed program and English learners. And just seeing of the community of the kids that are coming up, I see the impact that structural aides, which are essentially embedded tutors for their version of the high school, help them out. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Landon Garaway. I am a Marine Corps veteran. And this past year, it was my first year, or first semester here at Saddleback. And throughout then to now, I have spent a lot of time with my embedded tutors. Over the course of the summer, I spent 30 hours with my embedded tutor outside in the LRC. And the benefit that I got from going to see my embedded tutor was they already knew where we were in class. And they had a, they didn't have to stop and think about where we were. They knew where we were, and they usually had things already put to the side for us of where, where we were already struggling that they saw in class. And throughout this past semester, the embedded tutors I have are the reason why I'm doing so well, as well as how I did this summer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Katie Doyle. I want you to stay with me on this one. Okay, so I want you to think of embedded tutors like In-N-Out Burger, and then library tutors as like a burger from BJ's. The embedded tutors are quick, accessible, there when you need them, you know? And I'm going to be honest with you guys, a lot of students don't take the time they need to go see a tutor at the library if they just have a couple questions, because the time it takes to catch up that tutor on the type of content you're learning in class is a lot more time than if you're already in class and your tutor already knows what's happening. You could just ask them a quick question, and they're there to help you. And I think it's just a lot easier having a tutor already knowing what you're going through, and knowing you as a person, and you have that bond. And that's why I think that embedded tutors are not only useful, but also essential for a student's academic success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Wassim Al Khaled. I just want to say that embedded tutors are really helpful. They helped me a lot getting my grades better in class. And I never go to the LRC tutors, because it takes me like half an hour just explaining where I'm at in class, and just explaining like everything. And it doesn't help me a lot in the LRC. So they're really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Kia here. So I'm going to talk about the same topic this wonderful kids were talking about. Saddleback number one in wages, top in nation. So the question that, like, how did that happen? A lot of planning, a lot of thinking from your end and all the people here, a lot of it. At the most basic level, at the quantum level, is what's happening in the classroom. And first of all, I have open invitation for all of you. If you want to know how it's done, I will give you, share with you the secret sauce that goes inside the classroom for all this. You have open invitation to come to my classes. One ingredient for the way that I run my class, relying on embedded tutors. It has worked for 13 years. Then we did one study, just one study, that says we are not getting desirable results. That's offensive. But what did you desire? One student is not good enough? Two is not good enough? Is the price we're putting on students now? I don't know how that happened, but these kids are important, each one of them. Welcome to opportunity, that's their opportunity. My class is designed about this program. It's my understanding that the director of the LRC, Jennifer McConkey, is being pro-program. Kim Diarcie has been supportive of the program. So it was explained to me that you don't make the decision, but please, this is money well spent, really well spent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And thank you especially to the students for coming out to give us your opinion, because this, that's how we find out things. Thank you very much. It is now time for oral reports. First, the Board of Trustees. Trustee Milchiker.
Thank you. Many of us attended the American Community College trustee annual meeting. This is the American Community College trustee, so there were trustees from all over the state there, with the chancellor and many of the trustees.
The microphone wasn't on?
It's okay. Keep going.
I attended the American Community College trustee annual meeting with our chancellor and with the, many of the trustees, and it was an excellent meeting. And we got to really get to know our own trustees and trustees from all over the state. While there, I was able to attend an inspirational IVC Idea Pitch Competition, which is kind of like Shark Tank, that Professor John Russo put on Zoom while I was there, which was three hours later while I was there. But it was, it was really well worth it. So if you want to tomorrow, you can cheer on the top innovators at this Ideal Idea Pitch Conference tomorrow, Tuesday, November 18th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at IVC's Fine Arts Gallery. And you could see the final pitch competition there. I attended the Play Antigone, adapted from Sophocles, at Irvine Valley College. It was insightful, powerful, and there were many modern messages that are important today. And the best actors were the daughter of our wonderful president of classified professional, Desiree Ortiz's daughter was in it, and so was Stephanie Alvarez's son. And it was just fabulous. It was so well done. And they were great. They were wonderful. I love the documentary Little College in the Orange Groves. I was here when Irvine Valley College was just in Orange Grove, so I feel kind of like Irvine Valley College's mother, and I love the video. I attended the Orange County Business Council Economic Forecast and Saddleback College Musical Emma, which was just delightful. The IVC's Veteran of the Year Ceremony was incredible. The vet winner, one of the vet winners was US, was US captain, US Air Force captain Elizabeth Buckley. She says she's still working hard and playing hard, and she's volunteering in the community. And she arrived overseas from the previous night, and I thought she was just inspirational. At our Saddleback College Vet Memorial, our own student trustee Blake Leonard was this main speaker. I think it's really insightful and, he did a fabulous job. And it's really insightful and wonderful to have a vet as our student trustee. He's the very first vet.
Thank you.
That's our student trustee.
Thank you. We have to move on. Trustee Bartlet, please.
You're so mean. Thank you, Madam President. So since our last board meeting, I've had the pleasure of attending the October 21st through 25th ACCT Leadership Conference, along with President Inman and trustee Milchiker, and also trustee Rydel. And our student trustee Blake Leonard as well is also in attendance. October 29th was the Saddleback College trustee listening session, where we had meaningful interactions with the faculty and learned about their priorities, concerns, and suggestions, and really appreciated that. They're not shy, and very direct, and it was very helpful to us. October 30th, I also attended the OCBC Economic Forecast and What to Expect in the Economy in the Coming Year. November 6th, it was an honor to attend the Veterans Event at Saddleback College, where the highlight were the Saddleback College veteran students who spoke about their time serving our country and how important and impactful their educational and personal experiences have been while attending Saddleback College. Included in the veteran speakers, of course, was our own student trustee Blake Leonard, who really spoke from the heart about what Saddleback College means to him and how he is better prepared for what the future holds. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the Table of Thanks event at ATAP. And I want to take this opportunity to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving and for all of us to reflect upon the things that we are thankful for in our lives. And that concludes my board comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Dak.
So the last month has been very eventful for me. I will just speak to a few things that I attended. The Veteran of the Year event hosted by our Assemblywoman up in Irvine, Cadi Petri Norris, her event was fantastic at our IVC Arts Village facility. And I had talked to her chief of staff, and he said that they will continue to do that as long as she is in office at that location. So excited to be hosting that until she is termed out of the assembly, I assume. I also am happy to share the experience at our Coffee and Tea with the Board at IVC was a fantastic event. I thank everyone for coming and bringing forward their questions. I was able to talk to a couple of veterans afterwards to, you know, share what I knew about, what concerns they had, and offered them an open line of communication if they have any questions, which was, you know, very enlightening. And then I met those same folks at the roundtable with Congressman Dave Minn on November 7th. I was unaware that it'd start at 9:00, and I got there around 9:20. But it was still a great conversation, and it was just fantastic that we've been able to host so many people at our facilities up in Irvine. And the last thing I'm going to mention was, I had a fantastic time at the Orange County Teacher of the Year. And I want to congratulate both our Saddleback and IVC folks who made it up there. And that is it for my report.
Trustee Prendergast, please.
All right. A lot of the same events had the, I was at the Orange Tree Dedication at IVC. I was able to pull off being there in the afternoon, which is a rarity. And then also was able to attend the Little College in the Orange Groves documentary. Thanks to trustee Rydel for bringing our attention, the health of our friend Bill Hewitt. They had a very nice piece about him in the documentary, and I called him on my way home, just to wish him well and hope for the best. And it's, it's a rough road right now that he's going through. But the film did him justice, which I was really happy to see. The listening session, again, the IVC version that I was at was a lot of fun. We got some good information about all the great things that are going on at IVC, and they're very appreciative of everything that's going on there, good morale. The Orange County Teacher of the Year, again, as trustee Dak said, fun celebrating our professors. They do an amazing job, and it's really nice for them to get recognized the way they do at that event. It's just unfortunate they can't go on beyond, because I know they would likely be able to do that. And then lastly, as you might know, I'm, along with trustee Inman, I'm on the Orange County School Board Association Board as the treasurer. And our discussion at our last meeting on Wednesday, for the next dinner meeting, they're looking to try and bring in a group, I'm losing the name of it, something.
I can't think of the name.
Diligent something, or, I don't know. It's something to do about bringing boards together and having them work through differences and figure out how to be collegial and things. And that's what we're hoping to see.
Trustee Jamal.
I'm glad you brought up Bill, Bill Hewitt. I have known Bill since about the time I was elected. I did go and see him recently in the hospital. And, you know, Bill has been very consequential over the years as a counselor. And one thing you could say about Bill is he loves the colleges. He really does. He loves the colleges here, so I was glad, glad to see him. And, you know, he was, he was bantering. He was definitely engaging, so I was glad to see that. And then the Saddleback College Listening Session was excellent. For those who attended, faculty, the staff, I know there were administrators there too. We hear you, the listening, understand the challenges that you're facing. This, these sessions are not meant to be performative. They really aren't. They're meant to be true listening sessions where we take to heart what you're saying, and hopefully, there'll be some resolution to some of the issues that were raised. So chancellor, let's keep doing these sessions over the next years. And I think you're going to hold us accountable as well when you raise these issues with us. If they're legitimate, and they are, then they need to be addressed, and we heard you. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Rydel.
Good evening, everyone. I went to quite a few events, but I'm going to start with the two that I really, really enjoyed. And the one was Saddleback's AI Summit here on campus. And I'd like to thank President Stern for showcasing what we're starting to do or have done already here at Saddleback. It was amazing to me that so many of you are already doing it. I know the manager, Jennifer. I didn't know that this was being presented already, or, and classified, and what they've already done. And with the students, there was a panel of students up there. And let me just tell you one thing that I, that I do remember what one of them said. I remembered a lot, but this one hit me. It was, they didn't want AI to get the answer. Okay? They wanted AI to show them how to get the answer, and what it does when you get the answer. It was, I don't know why I didn't think of that before. But when I go on AI, I want an answer. And I really realized that these are the scholars that we're sending out to schools that I am so proud of. And I know that there are a lot more that we have here. And I know that our faculty are using that to instill that you're not wanting an answer. You're wanting to know why, and why is it the answer? So I just have to say thank you, and do more of those. I also wanted to share with you the two things that I really got out of the conference that I went to, as most of the panel here has done. And that was, one, it had to do with nursing, obviously. I went to that one. And it's Golden West, and what they're doing at Golden West, they are already partnering, oh, oh, with high school, high school students. And I think that's great, because we haven't done, maybe we have done that. Well, and the other one had to do with what our chancellor is already starting to support here at the, at the colleges, and that is AI, and.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. I went to many of those events that the people are talking about. But first, I too wanted to say that we've been thinking about Bill Hewitt. He recruited me to run for office in 2008, and I almost won. I don't like the L-word, the loser word, so I almost won. But we've been friends for a very, very long time, and colleagues in several different organizations. So I'm hoping for the best for him. It's a very, very tough time. I am very interested in the Orange County School Board Association meeting. As some of you know, I taught almost every grade from kindergarten through community college. So I'm never bored during the meeting, because I know exactly what they're talking about. The cool thing that happened this year, this month, though, that I really liked, was the fact that they were doing some things that we could copy them. We always think people should copy us, and we're right about that. But one of the things they're doing is, in one of their career technical education programs, it's on construction, and they're building tiny houses to make some of their homeless people not homeless. It's like, it blew my mind that it was that practical, what they were doing. So it's an excellent organization. The foundation also met this time, the Irvine Valley College Foundation. And I'm continually impressed by the amount of respect that the people in the community have for the colleges. It's, it's really, you kind of know it, but when you're in the room with it and you're hearing it, it is very, very meaningful. The other very meaningful thing, well, I did a lot of things, but the other one that I'm thinking of a lot is the veterans with Blake talking. And I had, I got to talk to, and that was, that was interesting to me, of course. But we owe these people so much more than we, we give them. And, but I think we're growing all the time in what we do for them. And that would be all. Thank you very much. Okay, Associated Student Government, Noah Aguilar. Oh, I'm sorry. See, I, I've done that again. Blake, speaking of veterans.
Good evening. As stated before, I also got to participate in the ACCT Leadership Conference. Some big takeaways, especially as a student, is AI is here to stay and is the future. So no matter what your personal opinions are on it, that's how it's going to go. And I am very firm believer that South Orange County will do great at handling that. And also, the big implementation of the trades in community colleges. And being here, I've been talking to other student trustees. I realized how awesome it is that we have ATAP and other community colleges across the country have nothing of the sort. So I can only think that we're going to continue to grow. Also, the Veterans Day Ceremony, I want to give thanks to President Stern and the fellow trustees that showed up in support. It was really good to have some big eyes on the veterans and know what we're really doing down there in that program. And then also, in this season of Thanksgiving, I just want to tell everyone, be thankful for what we have. We live in the greatest country on earth. And just something to think about in times of, you know, hardship. You know, we live in a really great place with a lot of great opportunities, and that's just what I want to leave with everybody tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Noah Aguilar.
Hello, Board. Great to see you all again in this wonderful evening. Before I begin, I would just like to mention, it's crazy that we're already in Week 14, and the fall semester is already coming to an end. I immensely look forward to what the next few weeks will bring. To begin my report, I would just like to mention, it's crazy that we're already in Week 14, and the fall semester is already coming to an end. I immensely look forward to what the next few weeks will bring. I immensely look forward to what the next few weeks will bring. To begin my report, I would like to start off by mentioning that ASG's IDSC Committee hosted our Fall Friendsgiving Celebration. It brought students together with soul food, music, and a pie eating competition. Very fun. We also partnered with our AAPI Student Club to host a collaborative movie night, strengthening cultural awareness and providing a fun experience for moviegoers. In addition to this, we're currently finalizing plans for our club debate on December 3rd, which will invite students from their respective clubs to engage in a respectful dialogue on key issues. And then lastly, I would like to conclude with ASG hosting our Proposition 50 Voter Information Drive to help students stay informed before the November 4th Election Day. That is all for my report.
Thank you. Maba Ahmed from IVC.
Hello. Greetings, members of the board. I just want to start off with saying that ASIVC is hosting a Thanksgiving event this coming Wednesday from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM where we're celebrating Thanksgiving with IVC students, promoting engagement and community as we celebrate the holidays together. And the fourth thing, thing I wanted to, the second thing I wanted to mention was that student organizations participate, oh my God, participated in the Love Irvine Community Service Event last Saturday. We had 14 club members participate to help with setup and welcome volunteers. Our VP of ICC led that event. Second, I have the honor of chairing the Bylaw and Policy Committee, which will be making changes to our constitution with the goal of promoting efficiency, productivity, equity, and a fairer version of ASIVC. We hope to get all changes done and voted by the student body in the upcoming spring election. Third of all, ASIVC has allocated $42,500 to scholarships, $22,000 from our own budget and $20,500 from unclaimed funds held by the IVC Foundation. We made a few updates. All ASIVC scholarships are now $500 each and we're using the unclaimed funds so we can offer more scholarships without spending extra from our main budget. And I just want to end my report with saying, I hope you have, you guys have a great Thanksgiving and spend good time with the people you love. Thank you.
Thank you. The Saddleback College Academic Senate, Frank Gonzalez.
Hello. Thank you, Board of Trustees. Couple of weeks ago, our executive team, we attended the statewide academic senate for the California Community Colleges. That's a mouthful, ASC Plenary. And where they provide PD and various professional development and various resolutions. Some of them are topics that you all have brought up from AI. There was a huge focus on AI literacy, so not necessarily using AI, but everybody using AI correctly and understanding where you want to be in that discussion because as Blake pointed out, right, it's here to stay no matter what your opinion is. Obviously, Common Course Numbering Talk and credit for prior learning, which is a big thing for us that we're trying to move forward more here at Saddleback. We also had the pleasure of meeting with Chancellor Barnes last week about what we were looking for in a new president as President Stern is retiring. And it seems to be that we're all on the same page, so thank you for meeting with us. Thank you. And then last, as trustee Jamal mentioned, us going through some difficult times now and that you heard at the listening session, so obviously referencing Banner. And so you should have all received an email from our Academic Senate President discussing that open item that we have at our Academic Senate meetings and just a sort of summary of what the conversations have been the last few months. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Irvine Valley College Academic Senate, Rebecca Beck.
No report.
Okay. Faculty Association, Robert Melendez.
Hello. Good evening. I want to take my time tonight to be able to talk about a faculty member who is retiring at the end of this fall semester and it's Margot Lovett. She's on the board agenda. She's served this college and this district for close to 30 years. And I know that 30 years is, you know, it hits you when you say that and like, okay. But like honestly, the impact that she's probably had not only at Saddleback, but across the district in her many roles, even with Faculty Association, goes beyond just those 30 years, to be honest with you. With the impact that she's been able to have with her fellow colleagues, with the impact she's been able to have even with Saddleback and what she's done in the classroom. We get lucky enough to have faculty like her every once in a while and I just want to kind of do right by her and be able to just say thank you for her service and the college and the district will not be the same without her. Thank you.
Thank you. Irvine Valley College Classified Senate, Brianna Bell.
Good evening. My name is Brianna Bell. I am representing IVC's Classified Senate in place of Zareta Kidos, the president. I am president-elect. We wanted to give a quick shout out and thank you to one of our classified professionals, Anthony Urquellimento, who serves as the treasurer for Classified Senate. He helped lead the First Gen Celebration on November 5th at IVC. It was a really big success. There was a resource fair, guest speakers, and games for faculty, staff, and administrators and students. And Anthony did help lead the gallery walk where we highlighted classified professionals, faculty members, administrators, and students in sharing their first generation experience at college. We are also collaborating with the Basic Needs Program, the OPS Program, and College Core to assemble 70 care packages for IVC students in need for the Thanksgiving season. We hosted last Friday a, just a meeting, two sessions, a morning session and afternoon session to write appreciation letters to our students that we can put in this package. Where Classified Senate is just sharing how thankful they are for our students while we also got to hang out with each other and share our appreciation for one another. There are 60 of the 70 letters that we aim to write, so we've got 10 more left, which is really exciting. And then on November 24th, the Professional Development Committee is hosting a Lunch and Learn Series on Time Management and Breathwork where it's going to focus on, you know, effective time management and making sure you stay centered while you are at work. Two classified professionals are also hosting Tech Thursdays in our Professional Development Center, the hub, where they will be, this November 20th, they will be talking actually about how to use Copilot and making your work more productive. And that is all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Saddleback College Classified Senate, Georgiana Martinez.
Good evening, esteemed chancellor and board members. The Classified Senate of Saddleback College recently celebrated National First Generation Day during the first week of November. From Tuesday, November 4th to Thursday, November 6th, students, faculty, and staff, who are the first in their families to attend college, were given T-shirts and encouraged to leave their mark, meaning they placed their handprints and name on the First Gen Wall. This is the fourth year that Saddleback Colleges Classified Senate participated in this campaign to raise awareness about the unique First Gen experience and to create a supportive culture for all students and employees. As classified professionals are the largest and most diverse group of employees, we wanted to recognize and celebrate the many members that were the first in their families to attend college. And we thank each board member and the chancellor for your continued support. I also want to deviate a little bit to congratulate ASG President Noah Aguilar for being awarded the STEM Scholarship, a National Science Foundation Scholarship up to $10,000 per year. He was selected for his excellent grades and involvement in the Saddleback community. Congrats, Noah.
California School Employees Association, Desiree Artes.
Thank you so much. Mine is gonna be a little bit on a somber note, but I just wanted to say as classified professionals, our hearts and thoughts are with our colleagues at Laney College as they mourn the loss of one of their beloved educators, John Bean, an athletic director, mentor, and guiding light to so many students. His legacy of dedication, care, and inspiration will continue to live on in the lives that he touched. During times of sorrow such as these, may we take a moment to reflect on the strength, kindness, and compassion that unite us as a community. It is these moments that our support for one another, our students, colleagues, and campuses mean the most. Together, we grieve, we stand, we heal as one family of colleges. As we approach Thanksgiving, let us hold heartfelt gratitude for one another and for our students we serve. Let us continue to show up for each other with understanding, empathy, and appreciation for the community we serve. I also want to offer special thanks for my IVC work family, specifically my PD Department at IVC and at Saddleback for their commitment to safety, connection, and care across our campuses reflect the deepest values of our community. Thank you to them for everything that they do to keep us safe and united. I had the pleasure at the state level to be a mentor for caring campus and Laney College were my mentees, so yes, we grieve with them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, oh, the Police Officers Association, is there anyone here from them? Okay, so then we go to number five, Public Careings. There are none this evening. Number six, Resolutions. I'll call on trustee and clerk TJ Prendergast.
Thank you. Agenda item 6.1, a resolution recognizing Native American Heritage Month. Whereas November is recognized nationally as Native American Heritage Month, a time to honor and celebrate the rich histories, diverse cultures, and enduring contributions of Native American, Alaska Native, and Indigenous peoples across the United States. Therefore, be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees does hereby recognize November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month and encourages all students, faculty, and staff to join in celebrating the cultures and achievements and enduring spirit of Native American and Indigenous peoples. We have a motion and a second on the resolution, please.
I'll move it. Second? Go ahead. Go ahead. She seconded it.
I'm sorry, what?
She seconded her.
Trustee Dack made the motion.
Okay. I thought you were gonna say that, I'm sorry. Okay, it's been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Bartlett to approve this resolution. We could vote now.
Yeah, it's not coming up on the.
That's, that's the presentation screen.
Yeah, I had the boarding.
I did not. I thought I had it.
Yeah, she did.
I know, that's why.
You're trying to do it twice again.
Did it pop up on yours? We have no pop up. How do I refresh it? Where's the refresh?
Oh, I got you. Let me hit that.
Your mic is also on.
I got you.
The motion carries on a seven to zero vote with trustee Leonard also voting yes. It is carried. Thank you. Okay, number seven, Board of Trustees and the Chancellor, 7.1, the Board Policy Revision Approval.
Second?
It has been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Dack. Is there any discussion?
Yes, yes.
Okay, trustee Milchiger.
I'll discuss this with the chancellor. I have asked several questions of the chancellor and of two vice chancellors about many of the items on the agenda and they have answered my question. On item 1.2, it says that, this is the Board Policy Administration Regulations, right? Yep. Yes.
1.2?
1.2?
Seven. The policy is 7.1. That's what I thought it was, okay? The Board Policy for Review and Study. So the one, the question I have is on item, I have several questions, but one of them was on, it was on item number one, yeah. The first one is 2410, is that helpful? Board Policies.
Yeah, it's Board Policy 2410 and it's item one.
That's why, that's the one I already discussed with the chancellor, okay? The one I was asking about was that, what it says is that prior to, I'm trying to see where it was here. Prior to, oh, here it is. I'm sorry, it's item number A and it says, it says return the policy to the chancellor and recommendations for further revisions. And then 1.2, which is what I had written down, was that it changed it and it adds this, this wording, which is recommending minor edits before forwarding, forwarding the, the policy draft to the board for review and study. And I'm wondering, I recommend you take the word minor out because if the Board Policy Committee reviews it, I don't think they just have to be minor edits. I think they could be any edits. So that's my recommendation is to remove the word edits.
No, minor.
Minor, I'm sorry. My recommenda, excuse me, my, my recommendation is to remove the word minor because I would say it should be rather than say recommend minor edits before forwarding the policy draft to the board for review and study. It should say recommend edits. And I make that motion to, I, okay, I see it.
Okay, I seconded it.
I'll second that.
Okay. So it's just to, so it's been moved and seconded? Is this how we do it or we send it back to Policy Committee?
I think you can, you can amend it at the dais here and then, so your, your motion is to approve the item with the exception of the one rescinding the word minor.
Yeah, absolutely. Just to approve the, the agenda item, but to, in that particular board policy, to remove the word minor. Okay. Trustee Dack.
Is there a substantive, is this a substantive change? What, what, I, I'll defer to Vice Chancellor Gable to answer this. Is there, what is the realistic change if, if this goes through?
You're asking trustee Dack.
No, I think, I think the change is fine, but I was just, for parliamentarian reasons, I was gonna say if it's a friendly amendment, because otherwise you need to vote on the first.
Right.
Motion and second, but if this is a friendly amendment to the original motion, then you can just do it that way rather than having different people motion and second.
It's a friendly amendment.
Friendly. Okay. It's a friendly amendment.
Wait, didn't trustee Prendergast make the motion?
I did.
Yeah, so is it friendly?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I forgot you made the motion.
Everyone's saying it was friendly and they didn't ask the person who made the motion.
We are friendly.
Sounded friendly.
I do have one quick clarification question on the overall item. It says for approval, but in the exhibit it says review and study.
Yeah, that was an error on our part.
Okay.
And I just.
My part.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Do we vote on this first or should I make one other comment? No, we don't have to vote.
Well, she's, she's got another comment on a different item.
Yeah, I just have to ask because I noticed that when it was talking, the board policy having to do with service animals, the only animal it talked about was, 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 was a miniature horse. And I thought that was unusual, but apparently that's in the disabled people's, that's in the regulations, so they have to put that in. They don't have to put any other animal that is person, people bring as, as a service animal to help them in their, in their studies. So that's why that, that, that recommendation about the miniature horse is in there. Slightly unusual. I guess that always, when I asked the chancellor that, she said that always comes up. People always ask that question. Trustee Dack.
So going back to my, my question, what is the substantive change in removing the word minor? Or I guess maybe what is, is there any logic to why it was in there?
I think the only reason that the, why we did minor before is because under item 8.1, it was return the policy draft back to the chancellor with recommendations for further revision. So it kind of felt like that that covered anything major or largely substantive. And that was kind of why we recommended to say recommend minor edits, just to try to differentiate what the difference was between A1 and A2. But I think it's fine removing the word minor from number two.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I probably, I missed it. I didn't understand, trustee Milch, your comment about, what was the second comment you made?
Oh, I just, I just was making a comment while I had requested, I had asked the chancellor.
Why they had the comment, the, the explanation about the miniature horses being service animals. And she said that is, that is part of the regulations in that particular item and that's why we always have to list it. She said, people always asked about it and I just thought I would mention it if any other looks at that and says, why do they? if any other looks at that and says, "Why do they mention miniature horses as service animals?" And that's why. Thank you.
Was there anything else on this?
No, that's it, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other?
And I just wanted to make sure that the Board Policy Committee had enough power to make the changes that they want, not just minor changes. But I appreciate that Vice Chancellor Gable explained it. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Then, it's time to vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote with trustee Leonard also voting yes. Thank you. Section eight is Presentations, and there aren't any. Section nine is Consent Calendars, the Consent Calendar, I should say. Are there any items that trustees wish to pull from this Consent Calendar? Trustee Milchuker.
I have two items. One is 9.3, the Student Out of State Travel, and the other one is the one about the Presidential Search, which is item number...
12. 1.2.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
12.2, the President's Search, right. Those two I'd like to remove from the Consent Calendar, just for discussion on them.
Do trustees have any other pulls?
Move the balance.
Okay, then let's vote on, what?
Second.
Okay, who've moved it? Okay, it has been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Jamal. All in favor, let's go ahead and vote then on the majority of the items. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote with student trustee also voting yes. Okay, that brings us back then to Consent Calendar, item number 9.3, Student Out of State Travel.
And I absolutely think it's fabulous that we send so many of our students to out-of-state travel. These are commuter students, and it's a wonderful opportunity for them to visit other areas and to travel together. I always approve the study abroad programs. But the question I had for the chancellor was that there's two, there's two IBC Speech Team conferences, and they both have 14 students and about the same number of advisors. And the one to Athens, Greece, is $14,000 less than the ones to Bethesda, Maryland, which is for the championship teams. And I, she explained to me, actually Anne Marie, Vice Chancellor Gable, explained to me that it was the fees for the national championship and the hotel bills that are that much more expensive, and that's why it's that much more expensive to go to Bethesda, Maryland than to Greece. And I just have to say that when I was a student at Ohio State University, I had the wonderful opportunity of taking a study abroad class to Mexico, to Mexico City for three months, and it was a lot less expensive to go to Mexico City for three months than to stay in Columbus, Ohio for three months. So that was a savings for us also, so you really have to look at the bottom line. So I do approve, make a motion to approve this item. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, it has been moved by trustee Milchuker and seconded by trustee Rydell, is that correct? That we approve this Student Out of State Travel. Time to vote, please. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote with trustee, student trustee Leonard also voting yes. Thank you. Okay, let's go to 9.12, trustee Milchuker.
And I also make the motion to approve it, but I also really felt that, and I talked to the chancellor about it, and she explained to me why, that the item of our searching for a new college president for Saddleback College should be open for trustee discussion, shouldn't be on the Consent Calendar. And that's why I moved it off and wanted to discuss it. I think that, I agree with the, what we're doing. I thank President Stern for giving us such a long lead time to give us a great opportunity to get another wonderful president like President Stern. So I thank him for that, and I thank the committee for putting together the committee. I, there's a Board Policy that explains the whole procedure, but I think the Board, if they have any comments on it or have any ideas, or they should be able to comment on it at this particular time. I know that we're actually going to serve, to select an executive search consultant, and that falls within the purview of the chancellor and the committee. It's not under the Board's decision. Well, when we pick a chancellor, we make all these decisions ourselves, but the president is a different platform, and so that we follow the Board Policy for this. So, does any of the Board member want to weigh in on this policy on moving forward to choose a new college president?
Are there any comments?
I thought...
I'll second it first.
Okay, thank you.
I thought it was well done.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Comprehensive job description, and I think the Board Policies allow for, in the timeline, the Board to have an opportunity to interview the candidate or candidates, and, but the ultimate decision is up to the chancellor, so we don't hire the college president. But that was a good addition a few years ago to have the Board be involved in the process. And I also think it helps the administration or the chief executive to see how this candidate interacts with the Board in a different setting. So I think it's useful.
Okay, thank you, trustee Dack.
I'll just say whoever we end up hiring has big shoes to fill. I know that, not writing your obituary just yet, President Stern, because you're with us for a little bit longer, but I do think that it takes a lot to get our schools to where they're at with IBC and Saddleback. So I very, I hope that whatever firm we hire that searches for President Stern's replacement gets us some candidates that can really continue forward with the success that has been going on at Saddleback.
Okay. Excuse me, are there any other comments?
Yeah, I also felt that the description of what we are searching for in a president was very comprehensive and really said that we would prefer the person has a doctorate or a PhD, but it's not mandatory, depending on who we select, and that the many, many challenges and the many requirements we have are listed there so that people know the amount of work that it is and the amount of work that we're requiring them to do. And as I talk to the chancellor, I think we might get some very good candidates, so I think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Rydell.
As many of you know, in the past, we never, we have not always had the opportunity to have lead time like we have now. And I'd like to thank our chancellor for jumping on it immediately and bringing all this together. It's a lot of work, but we have the time now, and we can use it wisely, and we don't have that anxiety of finding someone now. So it's most appreciated, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else? Thank you. So it has been moved by trustee Milchuker and seconded by trustee Prendergast to approve 9.12. Let's vote, please. The motion carries on a seven to three vote with trustee Leonard also voting yes. Thank you. Okay, number 10 is Business Services. Vice Chancellor Anne Marie Gable. Do you have comments on any of these before we start or as we go?
I'm just here to answer any questions that you have as you get to them.
Okay, so let's go then to 10.1, Regional Strong Workforce Participation Agreement with the Rancho Santiago Community College District, Irvine Valley College.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
And I have just a quick question.
Okay.
If Elliot or, I don't think we have, I think we have a couple items on strong workforce. It just, I think from my own education, just a refresher on this program. It would be nice. Yeah. Well, that's a good question, probably both. But start with the bigger picture first, the Strong Workforce Program. Is your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. I must be coasting already.
What do we call that in the military, short?
Short timer. So the state allocates strong workforce funds in two different directions. Some of those funds go directly to the college to build our own strong workforce programs, and some are regionally allocated to the region. The region is OCRC, so the Orange County Regional Consortium, that vets program requests from individual colleges, and Rancho Santiago District serves as a fiscal agent for managing those funds. But the allocations go to the winning proposals that are vetted. So we're very fortunate, we have always been overrepresented historically in the awards that are given to individual college projects. But we did discuss recently a trend of trying to find more collaborative approaches to those regional funds that would involve many colleges. But this year, we will be receiving awards for two projects that I'm going to put Vice President Voe Kumamoto on the spot for, if you can speak to those at Altram. If not, we'll come back with more information for trustee Jamal at a later date.
Do you want me to address all of the programs? Trustee?
I just have one comment also. Do you want me to do one?
So, our Strong Workforce Regional Projects are usually areas in which we find that it is better for us to work as a collaborative in order to move a particular opportunity or to address a particular problem that we might have across our programs at multiple colleges. So you'll see in our list of programs, you'll notice that there are projects where we're a lead in, and there are projects where we're a participant. And so one of the other colleges are leading. And the projects, you note, they're usually require multiple colleges to be a part of it. And the concept is that as a region, we are working together to really support each other and elevate our programs, and that's what the dollars are there for. So you'll see the ones that we are leading are in our healthcare area, and mainly because we are the lead college in our region in healthcare. And we actually want to take that leadership role because we feel the importance of partnering with each other on finding clinical placements, because it is such a big need that we feel it's very important for us to take a lead on that work. And also with the healthcare teaching and learning, we've done regional work on our sim labs and have expanded that effort to support other colleges in building out their simulation labs as well. Are there any other specific ones that you'd like me to address?
Eight different grants.
Excuse me? Yes, for, and the other ones are, you know, ranging from our regional marketing, which actually everybody gets. It's, they used to do a regional group that did marketing centrally. Now it's being dispersed out to the colleges for that marketing effort. We're not the lead. One of the other colleges is doing that, Coastline. And then Human Services, same thing. We're working together in building out our Public and Human Services Program with other colleges. That's our Community Health Worker, that kind of program is also connected to it. And then our, I'm not familiar with Equitable Pathways Technology Careers, but I'm assuming that is tied to our cyber programming, so I can find out more information for you.
Be great, thank you.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, when you said that we are partnering with other healthcare, and we've been working with their, let's say, sim labs or whatever, is it something that we've gone into them, or they've come to us and asked us?
Both. So as a lead organization, we usually have, we procure whatever the latest technology is or simulations, we set it up, we do the trainings and professional development for the region, and then we help support the colleges in building it out for the, in their school.
So these colleges are nearby, or they inland, or?
No, just all in Orange County.
Okay.
So all of the coast colleges, the Rancho colleges, as well as North Orange.
Yeah, so. Very good. Trustee Milchuker.
Yeah, and this is asking some questions about both. I know this is agenda item in Saddleback College, and the next one's Irvine Valley College, but I noticed that Irvine Valley College got $260,000 around, and Saddleback College got $840,000. But they're both getting the same amount for marketing. They're both getting $87,000 for marketing, both Saddleback and Irvine Valley College, and they're both getting the same amount for some other items too. But it looks like the reason that Saddleback is getting the majority of the extra funding is because of the many allied medical fields that Saddleback has, like nursing and paramedic training and all the allied medical fields that Saddleback has. And I know that they have to, what I was going to ask is, because the regional marketing is the same amount for Saddleback and Irvine Valley, does that mean that they pool all these funds together, and Rancho Santiago or coast maybe handles all the marketing for all four community college districts, North Orange County? Or do we do our own marketing for this?
I think these are dollars that are coming to each of our colleges. In the region, there is, and correct me if I'm wrong, President Stern and Chancellor Barnes, we used to collect and do a centralized marketing effort, but we were recognizing that that was really not working for us as a region, and so we've taken that pot of money and distributed it equally to all of the colleges.
That is correct.
Just a word on it, so there's an, it's called the Orange County Regional Consortium. All four community college districts participate in the Orange County Regional Consortium, all the chancellors, the presidents, our deans of CE. I'm actually the chair of the Orange County Regional Consortium. We just had a lovely strategic planning session, and what we do as a region is we use data, we look at what we need to focus on moving forward. Not surprising AI was a hot topic, adult learners was a hot topic. And so you're going to probably see future opportunities with the strong workforce monies focused on that. And what you're seeing, the decisions with regard to how much particular colleges get, sometimes it's based on the number of programs or FTES. Marketing was just distributed equally for the colleges to do their own thing. But anyways, it's really, it's a great thing for us to do that. We do it locally, we do it regionally, and again, we do it as a regional collaborative to benefit, you know, the entire region.
But so Rancho Santiago Community College is the one that distributes the funds. Does every single county in the state have the same program, where there's one college that's designated as the person that allocates the funds, and all the other colleges decide who gets the funds? Same as all the, okay. And then, so, I mean, these programs are CTE programs. They're very important for our students and to help our students get jobs. They're really key programs. I was also going to ask, what's the bridge program we're getting? Is that the program to help students bridge from high school to community college? It's a bridge project at Saddleback College is getting $109,000.
I, I'm going to take a leap. It is a bridge to employment that we're looking at working on, but I can confirm that detail for you.
Okay.
A lot of our regional projects are around employer engagement, because that is an area in which, as individual colleges, is very difficult to build employer engagement. And so the concept is if we work together as a region, we would be much more powerful and able to pull in big-name partnerships. It is a challenge, always, to try and get those partnerships and then to be able to work across the region. But it is a concept that we believe in, and we try to do it.
And I think your funds, $232,000 strengthening partnerships with healthcare agencies is very important, because I know it's really important for our nursing students to get internships in these programs, otherwise they won't get their nursing degree. So those are really important programs to go forward on.
That is why we put that proposal in, to be the lead agency.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, is there any other?
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on 10.1? Okay. Trustee Prendergast?
Just because this came up at our Orange County School Board, is this related to the money, CTE money that the K through 12s get as well?
It is connected.
It's connected, because they were talking about how they're very dependent, especially the CTE program that does the tiny houses, because they're very, hoping that that money can continue to come.
It is connected. There are funds that come out and support dual enrollment. There are funds that come out and support the pathway from high school to our program.
Thank you.
And I also noticed that both colleges are getting $20,000 for faculty development and career technical education. That's so important that the faculty is up to date on what the students need, career rights. Thank you.
Trustee Rydell?
Another quick question. It was brought up in this conversation. In that $232,000, is any of that allotted for salary to the students when they do the job?
No. It's actually bringing the partners together and providing opportunities for us to collaborate with them on filling the slots and creating the slots. We've also put funds towards creating a system to then collect all of the potential clinical sites, and then to be able to help students go through their onboarding for each of the sites, because they all have different requirements for onboarding.
Okay. So, I have one more question then. Does healthcare agencies get any of this money?
I do not think so. We are looking at that as a concept. But I think we're also looking at advocating at the state level for our, for potential of something to be written in that our public clinical sites would then partner with public colleges to provide those clinical site spots, because we are competing with for-profit companies that are taking those clinical sites.
You know, having done this for over 20 years in the nursing program during the summer, I just would like you to think when you do partner with these people, is once one of the preceptors told me, "Well, I don't get anything for this." And, well, I got him a pin. But what can I say? It's something that maybe we should think about, because we know that the private schools have done it, and that has really hurt all of us in the community colleges.
Yeah. We recognize that. And our dollars actually aren't allowed to do that right now. And so, part of our advocacy at the state level is really looking at putting in legislation that would say that public hospitals and entities that get public funding would prioritize our public schools to provide clinical site placements. That's what we would like to advocate for. Short of that, we are seeking funding to see how we could support perhaps funding clinical sites. Our concern with that approach is that our for-profit entities will just continuously beat us in their funding. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments on this issue?
I think Vice President Miranda wanted to add something on the bridge programs.
Thank you.
Not so much the bridge program. Yeah, I wish I could. Thank you for that. Just mostly to support, and my colleague, Vice President Komodo, sorry. You know, you're talking about regional dollars and consortiums that come through that actually are put into a lot of infrastructure and professional development. So, what you see there, and systems, infrastructure systems across the district. So, that's what most of them are built on, to kind of like seed money, to see if we can build upon our systems to support our students. So, that is the bulk of those types of funds. And then, not only the consortium regional dollars, which the items are on, there's also the local funding as well that allows us to take care of our program, I would say, in our own backyards a bit more, and support in that way. The local tend to be more of, dare I say, faculty-driven. They are the direct needs that the faculty see in their programs. And both campuses have processes in which they apply for the funds to make sure that they're aligned with the programs and the outcomes that they wish to build upon. A lot of it, again, is looked at in some ways to continue to support, or even pilot funds to build again. So, there are multiple avenues coming in of the strong workforce, both local and regional, coupled with Perkins, which is the, you know, the national funds that come in as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else on this? Okay, then let's go ahead and vote, please. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote with a student trustee also voting yes. 10.2, the regional strong workforce participation agreement with the Rancho Santiago Community College District and Saddleback College.
So moved.
Second. It has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Rydell. Is there any discussion? Think we've already had it. Any others? Okay, let's vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote with student trustee Leonard also voting yes. 10.3, award of bid number 12905-2025 for central plant renovation project, phase zero at Saddleback College, Icon West Incorporated. Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion?
I just have one quick question. Yes?
Okay.
One quick question. In the, Icon West had the best bid, except for two of the other bids that were less. And it says contractor deemed non-responsive. So, Vice Chancellor Gabriel, what does that mean? Those are two relatively lower, much lower bids, but they were, apparently the contractor was non-responsive. So, I wasn't certain what that meant.
Correct. So, we're required to award a bid to the most qualified bidder that is responsive and responsible. So, when bids come in, we are reviewing all of the bid documents to ensure that they have met all of our bid requirements, and that they have truthfully put forward all the answers within their bid. So, at any given time, when we find that there are inaccuracies in what they represent to us and what is actually occurring, then we deem them non-responsive, and then we move up to the next highest bidder.
Well, that makes sense. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, it has been moved by trustee Jamal and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Let's vote. The motion carries seven to zero with student trustee advisory vote also of yes. 10.4, authorization to inter-enter donation agreement for Saddleback College Stadium multipurpose room naming rights, Mark Schwartz. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it.
It has been moved by trustee Milchuk and seconded by trustee Dak. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
I just have a question.
Mr. Pim.
Are we supposed to know who Mark Schwartz is?
Yeah, I was going to mention who he is.
I tried to do a Google search, and there was like seven of them.
Well, I could mention that. He's the president of the Saddleback College Foundation, and he speaks at so many of the college events. And he's got this incredible, wonderful, booming voice that it sounds like he's some kind of a fabulous announcer. And he's also an actor. And he's like an incredible supporter of Saddleback College. And do you have anything more to say?
I have nothing to add. And Mark and Linda Schwartz have been generous donors and supporters of the foundation for many years.
Okay. You'd recognize him if you saw him, because he speaks at many of the events.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, I want to thank him for this wonderful bid of $75,000. So, that's great. Wonderful donation of $75,000.
I know Mark, and I've seen him in action with the foundation. And I just want to thank him for this donation and the naming rights. Where is it going to be, the room? It's in the stadium?
So, this is the second room on the floor that can be a convening area. It's essentially a conference room, but it's not the ferry suite. It's the one we don't.
On that same level?
It is.
So, it's a similar-sized room?
It is. Maybe a little bit smaller.
And it says that there'll be a naming right inside the building, I think the Schwartz family room, and also outside the building, there'll be a plaque, I guess.
For the designated room, not for the building itself. It's the room naming rights that he, his donation is used to recognize.
Well, we thank him for that very generous donation.
Hold on, Marsha. So, the $75,000, then that's our current offering for naming rights on rooms in the stadium?
No. So, $75,000 would be 7.5 times the designated amount under the BP for a conference room. So, the BP that you all have brought forward and embraced is the BP we use as a baseline. But whenever we can procure a larger donation for a naming right, we try to do that.
You don't say no.
No.
Any other questions or comments? Very generous. Thanking him so much. Let's vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote with student trustee Leonard also voting yes. 10.5, Saddleback College Science and Math Building Project, change order number six, Icon West, Inc. Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second. It has been moved by trustee Milchuk, seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just am very much in favor. I know these are change orders, but I'm very much in favor of these orders that will bring greater safety to the building. I was wondering, they said one of the things is outdoor emergency phones. How do those outdoor emergency phones work? They're putting in outdoor emergency phones. They're just like the old phones in the phone booths that hang on the walls?
No, so they're the blue phones that you see around cities and campuses and that type of thing. So, it is, they are cellular. They're not like your old Hawaiian phones.
I like the old phones.
No, they're not the old phones, not like your old phone booths, but.
Sorry to ask. And so, I mean, this is giving outdoor phones and also greater lighting to the area. So, it'll be a great savings, it'll be a great safety features to the building. So, I'm in favor of that. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote, yes, with student trustee Leonard voting yes as well. Number 10.6, Enterprise Resource Plan.
Did we have a motion second on that?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I made the motion.
Enterprise Resource Planning System Enhancement Award of Agreement Evisions LLC for Argos Reporting Solution. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved by trustee Milchuk and seconded by trustee Bartlett. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just have to, I did ask Vice Chancellor McDonald about this. And I know we're adding this Argos software to assist staff with reporting. And apparently, this is a great improvement over the reporting that they have with the native Banner reporting tool. So, I was going to ask Vice Chancellor McDonald, how will this help the staff work with Banner and do the reporting in a much more, better, in an easier way for the staff?
I don't want to use up too much of my words for the night, so I'll be brief.
Okay, thank you. That's good.
The illusion reporting tool is not up to par for what our community expects. So, we've always planned to make enhancements. We installed insights. It's very clunky. It's difficult. It takes a lot of time for us to get folks to write the sequel code to build reports. Almost all Banner colleges use Argos. We would be number 23 on the new Banner. So, they have data blocks with a lot of canned stuff where out the gate, we're going to have a lot more capability. And by next spring, we intend to go department by department to train on reports and use that as an opportunity to train on everything else. So, we're sending a team at every department using reports as the gateway to get into the department and get a lot of the training done. Big improvement.
It's really good news to hear that we're getting more training done and with better software to really assist our staff working with the new Banner project. So, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero yes vote with student trustee Leonard also voting yes. Section 11, Human Resources, Karen Dubert. Do you have any comments before we go through the items? Right. Okay. 11.1 for SO, well, never mind. Academic Employes and Management Personnel Actions, Ratifications, Regular Items.
No changes to 11.1.
Okay.
Move the item.
Second, and I have.
It has been moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Milchuk. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just have to mention two longtime retiring employees. One was mentioned before, Professor Margot Lovett, who's been a Saddleback history teacher for almost 29 years. She was the academic senate president twice, from 2022 to 2024. She's been extremely informative at our board meetings when she was the academic senate president from Saddleback College, as are the different constituent groups that speak at our meetings, are very informative to the board and to everyone else, what's important to the staff. She also spoke at several of my meetings about women's history. And it was, she did a very good job. She volunteered to do that. So, she's been a very steadfast advocate for our college and district, and we will miss her. So, I thought I would mention that. And she's a very passionate person about her subject. Also, I want to mention Maria Mayenzi, who's a Saddleback College cinema, television, radio instructor, who's been working for us almost 15 years. She's also a member of the academic senate, and I attended one of her classes, and she was a very good teacher as well. So, we wish these people well in their retirement and thank them for the many years of really good work they gave to our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Yes. So, Robert Melendez, I'm glad you brought up Margot's name, because it goes to show you need to read the full agenda. I did not catch the retirement in the agenda until you invoked. So, thank you for doing that. We're going to miss Margot. I actually got to, I think when I started out as a trustee, I don't, maybe we weren't always in sync. I don't know. But over the years, I really enjoyed interacting with her and got to like her very much. And I think she's definitely going to be missed. And I don't know if she's watching right now. Maybe she is. Maybe she'll watch it later. But I want to thank her. Thank you, Margot, for all these years at our district. I think she gave it her all. And I think that's all we can ask for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, let's vote, please. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote. Yeah. With a seven to zero vote, the motion carries. Thank you. 11.2, Classified Personnel Actions, Ratifications, Regular Items. Motion?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved by trustee Milchuk and seconded by trustee Dak. Is there any discussion?
Changes.
No changes. I'm sorry. Thank you. Now, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just have two more retirees to mention. Yeah, I just have two more retirees to mention. Shahara Dadazan, who is Saddleback College Admin Assistant Instructional Support for almost 12 years, and Ellen Polling, Saddleback College Fiscal Veteran Specialist, Specialist for, for almost 15 years. So we also thank these classified professionals for their dedication to our district. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero vote. 11.3, Non-Bargaining Unit Personnel Actions, Ratifications, Regular Items. Are there any changes?
No changes.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Move the item.
So, second.
Oh, sorry.
Who did? Trustee Bartlett motioned, I seconded.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's moved by trustee Bartlett and seconded by trustee Jamal. Any questions or comments? Okay, let's vote on that one. The motion carries on a seven to zero vote. Okay, we're on to section number 12, Educational and Technology Services. 12.1, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Spring 2026 Community Education Programs. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Prendergast and seconded by trustee Dack. Is there any discussion?
I just have, I just have one comment. I, I really, I'm going to ask trustee, Vice Chancellor Gable, these programs, community service programs have to be self-supporting. Is that correct? So the college does not make any money from them, and they do not take any funds from the college operating budget. Is that correct?
It is correct that they are not allowed to take any funding from the college budget. They do try to make some money on it, though.
Oh, they do? Okay, that's excellent. I didn't know that. Great, we like to make money. That's great. I, I, in, in looking over the list of the classes, very comprehensive list of the classes that are going to be honored, I can't wait till I have some time to take some of them. And I, I was really recommended, there's an AI class taught by one of our professors, Professor Foot. It's supposed to be just outstanding, so I hope one day, when I have more time, I will be able to take that class. Thank you.
Okay. There any, is there any other discussion?
Question. Yes, so I understand that the expenses for connecting the courses are paid for by the income from participant fees. If you don't have enough participants, then, and you don't take money from the college budget, do you cancel the course or you cancel the course? Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? The motion carries on a seven to zero vote. 12.2, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Student Equity Plans. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved by trustee Dack and seconded by trustee Prendergast. Is there any discussion? The motion carries on a seven to zero vote with student trustee Leonard also voting yes. That brings us to number 13, Information Items. We have the Quarterly Investment Report, 13.2, the Retiree Trust Fund, 13.3, Pension Stabilization Trust Fund, 13.4, Monthly Financial Status Report, 13.5, Basic Aid Report, and 13.6, Quarterly Financial Status Report, and 13.7, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers. Those are information items. Okay. We now have written reports from our esteemed managers, starting with Chancellor Barnes.
I just want to illuminate two quick things. One really big deal, though, and that is our wonderful Vice Chancellor Gable, who was recently recognized up in Sacramento for earning what is called the Paul Holmes Facilities Leadership Achievement Award at the Community College Facility Coalition, CCFC. I know that we had a wide variety of individuals in this room. Yay, you got one back here. You had a fan club who participated. I was able to fly up there for 24 hours to also recognize her. And this, it's a prestigious award. What's really beautiful about it is it's an award that the peers select from all the statewide leadership with regard to facilities. It's not just about buildings and brick and mortar, it's about being fiscally steward, it's about being collaborative, and it's not just about just doing what you got to do within your own district and colleges, but really kind of inspiring the whole state. So she's also only the second female in the history of this award to, to earn it. And, yeah. I was so surprised. I, I was like, how many people are here? I think there's like 700 people there, and she is like, I, at the end, I was like, oh, I know, I'm with Anne Marie, I'm with Anne Marie. I was like a groupie, like, you know. Anyway, so congratulations, that's a wonderful recognition. I was glad to be able to participate. And then one other thing, I just, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this one. You all have been seeing our Economic Impact Reports. A new Economic Impact Study was released, and you could read about it, it was in the Orange County Register as well, but just so you know, beyond education, obviously, our district and colleges contribute to the economic vitality of our region at the tune of $2 billion annually. We produce jobs in the area, our students have higher earnings and contribute to the economy as well, so really great job, it takes a village, so I wanted to point that out. And that concludes my report.
Mr., Dr. Hernandez is not here, and in his place is Dr. Martha McDonald for Irvine Valley College.
Thank you, and good evening, members of the board. On behalf of President Hernandez, I just have a few updates. First of all, a huge congratulations to our men's soccer team for capturing their first Orange Empire Conference title since 2015. And this is a wonderful achievement, especially for coach, head coach Connor Ward, as this is his first year as full-time tenure-track faculty member, and he was also named OEC Coach of the Year. The team heads into the playoffs this Wednesday at Long Beach City College, and we're proud of the coaching staff and the nine players who earned EOC honors, including Christian Sanchez, who was named conference MVP, and Armin Taraney, Offensive Player of the Year. It has been a really meaningful and busy month for the Veterans Service Center. On the 7th, we hosted the Veterans Roundtable with Congressman Dave Min, featuring, featuring eight of our student veterans, and engaged the audience across campus, across the campus community. It was an excellent conversation regarding about the needs of our military-connected students and also the congressman's work in the district. Thank you, trustee Dack, for attending that meeting and joining us. We also celebrated Veterans Day on November 6, and we had our keynote speaker, Brand Theobald, our student-veteran panel, and a ceremony marking the 250th and birthday of the Marine Corps. And in addition to that, we were honored to host Assemblywoman Connie Patriot Norris in terms of the Veteran of the Year. And finally, our model United Nations team earned national recognition at the National MUN Conference in DC. IVC received two Outstanding Delegation Awards, two Position Paper Awards, and rare distinction of having students chair three committees. This is an exceptional achievement for any college, but especially for community colleges. And in addition to that, the students were able to meet with some Congress, congressional staff, and military fellows. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Saddleback President, Dr. Elliot Stern.
Thank you, President Inman. First, I want to congratulate Noah Agalar on his STEM scholarship. The STEM program is one of many grant programs supported by the NSF. This year, celebrating National Science Foundation, this year, celebrating its 75th year. It supports students from all kinds of backgrounds getting into STEM and supports the general science and Americans' awareness of science in general, and we hope that it'll be around for a very long time. I also want to congratulate Margot Lovett, a personal friend, on her retirement. I have a joke with my team sometimes, and it's WWMD, which is what would Margot do? And that means what is, what is the voice that we're not hearing, sometimes from the faculty, sometimes from someone who's been doing this for a very long time. One of the things that I do love about Margot as a faculty member, or loved about Margot as a faculty member, and now love about Margot as a friend, is she will always look you in the face and tell you when she disagrees with you, and she will disagree without being disagreeable, and that's a lost art in our society, and I'm very grateful for it, among many things to be thankful for. I want to thank trustee Milchiker for focusing on the community ed class in AI that she mentioned. It's actually a three-part class in AI and community ed, but also, as of spring, we will also have an emeritus class for those who want to take an emeritus AI class. There is an emeritus-based AI class, and also a four-credit class in the CIM area. And then, starting in fall, we'll have two advanced classes on AI, one focusing on machine learning in general, and the other more focused on agentic AI. That's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor Chris McDonald.
Would like everyone to look forward to our November Banner Status Report. I know in previous months, they're not well-read. We will have the links to the results from the employee and the student surveys, and we'll also, in November, outline our plan to make things better for the majority of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chancellor for Human Resources, Karen Dubert.
No report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. And Vice Chancellor for Business, Anne Marie Gable.
No report.
No report. All right. Unless there is an objection, we will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
It's a miracle.